The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
We have one member of the Public Service Committee, Councilor Pauline Cormier. You want to start the hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing on 9-22 Verizon New England Incorporated requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and handholds with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way or ways. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place two, four-inch conduits on Mount Pleasant Avenue beginning at Manhole 72A located on the northerly side of Mechanic Street and running in a southerly direction down Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 241 feet to a point and then westerly to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place one, four-inch conduit on Mount Pleasant Avenue beginning at pole T dot three, located on the easterly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue and running in a northwesternly direction along Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 120 feet to a point on the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Howe Street, place one, four-inch conduit on Howe Street, beginning at pole T dash two, located on the northerly side of Howe Street and running in a westerly direction down Howe Street, a distance of approximately 209 feet to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Is there anyone here from Verizon New England who would like to address the council? Seeing none, procedurally, Mr. President, I'll ask you, I can conduct the public hearing, see if there's anyone here, but when we last left this at the last meeting, Verizon was supposed to contact members of the DPW here. We've had, according to the clerk, we've had no contact with them. So procedurally, I can go forward with the public part of the hearing. My question would be what our position would be afterwards.
Okay, well, because it is scheduled for public hearing and there may be members of the public present, I think you should probably allow for the public to weigh in if anybody wants to. And then, once that's over, you can give us a recommendation as to what you want to do with the public hearing, either continue it or close it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll direct this, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of or against petition 9-22, please come to the podium. And for a second time, if there is anyone present who would like to speak in favor of or opposed to 9-22. And a third and final time, if there's anyone here who would like to address the council on 09-22, please come to the podium. Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. President, I would ask, I would ask that the public hearing be closed.
The only, only problem I think that that might pose is that if in fact we want additional input from either Verizon, the Department of Public Works, or anybody else, we won't be able to take it.
If they can give it leave to withdraw?
Oh, yeah, they'll have to start over, which means more publication costs, right? So.
No, that's, that's fine, Mr. President. I would suggest that we.
Maybe we give it one more date.
Give it one more date.
We'll have the clerk inquire as to whether they want to give it leave to withdraw or they want to, want to appear and be heard. Maybe that might make the most sense.
I believe it does.
Okay.
That'd be perfect.
So the suggestion would be to continue it. Madam Clerk, to when?
So 6:29, November 8.
All right, so the recommendation that the clerk suggests for a hearing date and time would be November 8th.
6:29.
At 6:29 PM. Is that okay with you?
It is.
Councilor Cormier. All right, you've heard the recommendation of the Public Service Committee to continue the public hearing on 9-22 to November 8th at 6:29 PM. Is there any discussion, Councilor Angelina?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, Madam Clerk, I'd just like to issue a friendly reminder that I had asked that we get some kind of correspondence from the DPW that confirmed that there was indeed a conversation about this project prior to, okay? Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you for that note. Any other discussion before we vote on the, on continuing the public hearing? Okay. None being seen, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing to 11, 11:08 at 6:29 PM, please recognize the usual manner. And Councilor Cormier, David Cormier, you're abstained. All right, so the public hearing is continued by a vote of five to zero. Been a while since we had a five to zero vote. All right, move on to 75-21. Is it 6:05? I think it is, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to proceed?
I am. This is a hearing before, a public hearing before the Lemonster City Council. Petition 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. This is, this is a situation where I have made edits to what the planning director has submitted to us, and I think the only thing we're waiting for is suggested penalty provision for noncompliance. So I'll go to the remaining member of the Legal Affairs Committee. Mr. Cormier, if you have any questions or comments at this point?
I do not.
Okay. Does any other city councilor have any questions or comments? Just go to the public real quick, as I'm required to. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 75-21? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 75-21? Seeing none, I would just ask that we continue this public hearing to the next, next meeting. I don't, I don't anticipate it'll take more than five minutes.
6:25.
Okay. So the clerk is suggesting November 28th at 6:25, is that okay with you?
That works for me.
Sorry?
November 8th.
Oh, I misspoke. Okay, November 8th at 6:25 PM. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing on 75-21 to November 8th at 6:25 PM, please recognize the usual manner. By a vote of six to zero, the public hearing on 75-21 is continued to November 8th at 6:25. Okay, we have just a couple of minutes before we can start our interviews, and at 6:10 we'll begin with the interview of Cheryl Carlino. Two minutes. Acting Chair of Ways and Means, you can begin the first interview with Cheryl Carlino.
Okay, this is an interview by the Ways and Means Committee. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Cheryl Carlino of 15 Tolman Avenue to the Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Carlino, I see you here, if you want to come on in. I notice you have the support of a lot of the other emergency management people. I think Mr. LeBlanc would have been very appreciative of that. So Ms. Carlino, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, it's sort of an informal interview, it's really just to let the public get to know faces and become more familiar.
Yeah. My husband and I moved to Lemonster about two years ago, right as everything was shutting down. And shortly after, shortly after we moved in, we got talking to one of our neighbors who added interest us to the Office of Emergency Management and got my husband involved. He's been involved for about a year, is how I got interested in emergency management. He'd worked with it before, but I've been a nurse for about 25 years or so, and I'm really looking forward to just to getting involved in the community and being able to help out and do whatever I can.
Well, thank, thank you very much for volunteering. It's, it's a great thing. I don't, I don't think the public realizes how much emergency management does and how many different lives they touch. Am I a committee one?
No.
No, Councilor Cormier, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilor Cormier, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I guess I just want to ask, what are you, is there anything in particular that you're looking to focus on, on the emergency management that you, that interests you?
Well, as I said, I'm a nurse and I've been working, will be working with like the EMS part of it.
Okay.
And whatever I can be plugged in, I'm looking forward to learning and just being a part of everything that I can be.
Good. Other than that, I'd just say thank you very much for your, you know, your willingness to serve. We always look for, for people that, you know, are, have a community mind type of mindset, looking to do good, so we thank you very much.
I noticed one of your interests is piano.
Yes.
Do you play?
Yes.
You might, you might get hit up to play at some of the holiday parties.
I haven't gotten that far yet. I have an old piano that was over 100 years old, it was my grandmother's.
Oh, wow.
That I recently got restored, so I'm learning again.
Learning, okay. Any other councilors have any questions or comments at this time?
Just thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Everybody's all set? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming down.
If there are, if the next two interviewees are here, we could do those in block together. They're both Conservation Commission.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. We're looking for Michael Sisi, did I pronounce that correctly?
You're closer than most.
Yeah.
C Key.
C Key.
Actually, if you were Polish, you'd be saying, oh, you are Polish.
I am Polish, so I shouldn't.
She has why you're still.
Oh, all right.
So that's me.
Okay, so Sisi?
C Key.
C Key, okay.
Kind of forgot.
And Mr. Gulick?
That's correct.
All right.
I like that.
One for two.
So we couldn't find anyone for conservation, and now we're getting applicants with, with very extensive backgrounds. So you guys could just tell us a little bit about yourselves, beginning with Mr. Siki?
Sure, sure. Well, my name is Mike Siki, I've been living in Lemonster for about 40 years now. Grew up in the air. I, for the last 30 or 40 years, I've run my own, a number of my own businesses and sold them. I've sold other people's businesses for them. I ran a company by the name of Attache, and what we did was, we would, of course, DEC and a lot of the high-tech companies had gone out of business, so I had a business that would take an office here and an office in London, and we would find international software businesses that were small and upstarts and wanted to launch their business in the United States. So I would sign a contract with them, and then I would take retired executives from DEC and other places to form a core team of individuals to build those small businesses into profitable entities. And once we made them profitable, we would go and find their first round of permanent management, and they would go back into retirement, I would go and take a piece of the equity and go do something with someone else. So I did that for about 20 years or so. The last one, me and company out of Stockholm, Sweden called Palet Corporation, that we sold last year for $101 million. So we did very well with it, built an office in Chicago, very good product, so, so that's, that's it. I have a wife, three German Shepherd's, live on 270 Hill Street.
And do you have any particular interest in the Conservation Commission or just looking to get involved or?
Well, I do, I kind of, I do have an interest in it. I, I've had four pieces of property, three in Lemonster, three now, well, no, one in Lancaster. I have eight acres of waterfront over in Lancaster and worked with the Conservation Board there quite, quite often, Tom Christopher and David. And so it was kind of interesting to me, but I had a piece of property down on Texas on the coast, and we were in a floodplain and in conservation area. And we sold that once Harvey hit, we had hit dead center where we were and we didn't sustain any damage, so we sold it. So I get involved down there, and I figured I had a little bit of knowledge, which probably is dangerous. The, the reason I actually found the conservation piece, I was looking originally at a, the volunteer slot, was I was looking at a piece of property on Wantuset Street that had some wetlands associated with it. I had property previously on Bainbridge Street that had wetlands associated with it. And so I was kind of interested in how the commission worked. Lancaster, as you may or may not know, is, Tom Christopher's a bit of an aggressive, he's from Lemonster, many of you might know him, he's a bit of an aggressive individual. And I wanted to bring something of a feel to a commission that would make it easy for people to come in and talk to us. And when I met Angela, I said, there it is, there's the person that's easy to talk to that can, understands how scary these things, these meetings can be. And you can still make people feel comfortable, enact the proper policies, and get what you, both parties could get out of, get what they want out of it. So I didn't get that piece of property on Wantuset Street, but I did, as David Cormier knows, Councilor Cormier knows, I did buy a piece of property on Lake Samoset, and we're not kind of doing anything. So I have a vested interest there, of course, but that's kind of putting me under the microscope more than anything, so it's right dead center in the middle of the pond, and I've got all eyes on me, and so we're determined to do everything, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and going above and beyond, and I think we've proven ourselves to do that, both in Lancaster, when I had a place called Camp Clare, there was a former retreat for Catholic nuns. We, we lived by the letter of the law and we did the right things, and we, we split the property off in a couple of pieces. So I, you know, not that I want to do that here, we, the interest just, if I've got a couple of extra minutes, is that we live in Lemonster, we've lived in Lemonster for a long time. We had intended to go to Cape Cod and decided not to, and this is a lovely little piece of property that's a mile from our house, and we can get down and sit there and look at the birds and look at the fish, we have no intention of really developing it, but, yeah, so I have a vested interest there, and it's, it's caused me to do quite a bit of study.
Well, now you'll be taking a stab at the other side of the, the other side of the table.
Absolutely.
I'll go to the other member present tonight, Councilor Cormier, any questions or?
I have no questions other than, you know, just thank you very much for willing to serve. We need some good people, and it sounds like, I know they have a lot of walks too during the day, sight walks and stuff, so it sounds like you'll be free and able to do that kind of stuff as well, which is good. I'm sure Angie will appreciate that, so we appreciate your willingness to learn and serve. Thank you very, very much.
That's the other thing I didn't quite mention, I am, I retired last year, so I was able to have the time. I, I just kind of looked, I have four million air miles with various airlines, and I've, I spent five years of my life alone in Marriott Hotels, so I've never been able to really help, really pay back. My wife was a, was on the board of directors for Shulman, she worked for Joanne DiNardo at the, at the phone company for many years and now has her own successful business. So we have a tendency to try to, to do the right thing, either financially or through, you know, through human capital, so there's, we're excited to be, I'm excited to be doing it. We're jumping in, you know, feet first.
All right. Any other councilors have any questions, comments at this time? Okay, oh, Councilor Angelina, I'm sorry.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman, but certainly anybody that refer to Tom Christopher as aggressive, I suspect will do quite well in the Lemonster Conservation Commission. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Gulick, if you could just, you know, introduce yourself.
I don't know Tom Christopher, so that may work out. My name is Dr. Rich Gulick, I live up near the top of Old Farm Road. My wife Wendy and I moved here from Charlottesville, Virginia, and about this time, three years ago. So post-COVID at least, or not post-COVID, but latter COVID, looking for things to do. I like hiking the hills up in the conservation area behind my house, along the New Snack Ridge, so I joined the Lemonster Trail Stewards. I work on Caitlin's staff on Election Day, supervising one of the boxes in my ward. That was my first year last year, so I'm looking forward to that this year, and now this with the Conservation Commission. When looking for things to do, this is, when I looked through the whole town, town government and all the functions, this was the closest to my background, having degrees in environmental science, environmental management, environmental engineering, latter being my PhD, University of Michigan, I'll throw that in there, but, and North Carolina for my masters. So I've been doing drinking water work, public drinking water systems for quite a few years, Director of Operations for a wholesale place down in Charlottesville. Right now, I own my own small consulting firm, meaning me, Water Compliance Solutions LLC, and I do work for small towns mostly, and, well, some in Western Massachusetts, some in the central region here, especially those struggling with compliance and struggling with the state and their regulations and how they enforce them.
All right.
And so that's what fits in with this. I've done a lot of work for the American Waterworks Association, American Waterworks Association related to source water protection. I designed and then authored their source water protection standard for U.S. Water Utilities and did a lot of other things, and a guidance manual. So there's some technical background that fits with this, it's on a little bit different scale, so.
All right, well, thank.
Very helpful.
Thank you very much for, for volunteering, Councilor Cormier, any questions or comments?
I once again have no questions other than to just thank you very much for your service, and, and we appreciate it, and we'll certainly, I'm sure we'll be in, in contact at some point in time. One of the things that, you know, when I got on the city council, that I never realized is how many Conservation Commission issues that I would actually be dealing with. I've dealt with the Conservation Commission many more times over the past dozen years since I've been here than I ever thought I would, so it is definitely a busy and an important commission, and, you know, I look forward to working with you whenever something arises.
Thank you, we're looking forward to making sure things move along quickly, catching up on some of the outstanding cases and so on. I also, my schedule is also quite free, so Michael and I have been to most of the site visits. I set my schedule based on, you know, part-time work.
Good.
Semi-retired.
Okay. Any other councilors, Councilor Bedanza?
Yeah, I just want to thank both of you, very impressive backgrounds in each case, and city really benefits from having competent, qualified people in these jobs, they're very important jobs. And thank you for volunteering and thank you for lending the experience you have, both in the business world and, you know, whether it's specific to the conservation, I'm sure you'll both be great and active members. Thank you very much.
I'm glad to help.
Councilor Angelina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Gulick, I also want to take the opportunity to thank you, and if you're part of the Trail Stewards group, you've certainly met some wonderful folks over there, I'm sure. And I have long been an advocate of water supply protection, I'm former director of the Land Trust here, who preserve quite a bit of, of open space, and we also, a number of years back, dealt with the tri-halo methane issue, that I'm sure you know what that is. And so, welcome aboard, and it'd be great to have someone competent and knowledgeable and being a steward of our water supply and our conservation land, so.
I specialize in disinfection byproducts, including the THMs and halocetic acids, that I think they also struggle with.
Terrific. Glad to have you.
That's what I do with most of my other clients, that and their client disinfections.
Makes sense. Well, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll take up your matters later on in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll be happy to, once we start our regular meeting, we'll be happy to move those to the front, all of the appointments to the front if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
Shall we wait till that?
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you want to announce the status of the public hearing regarding 10-22, we can take that next.
Yes, 10-22 Revolutionary Clinics 2, Inc., they're seeking a special permit from the Lemonster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Lemonster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105, was scheduled for a public hearing this evening, I think due in large part to the fact that the council is short-staffed. The applicant has requested that this matter be continued to the next council meeting, so we're happy to oblige them. So this public hearing is going to be heard on November 8th at what time?
6:30.
6:30, and do we need to vote on that or we're good?
Well, I don't think we do, because it's going to be re-advertised, it's really going to be.
Okay.
Set up as a whole sui generis.
Okay.
Hearing, so.
So November, November 8th at 6:30, and we'll take it up at that time.
All right, so it is just about, I would indicate to the public, as well as to the interview, the candidates for the, for confirmation, we did have a Recreation Commission review at 10-22, 5:00 PM. Apparently, that's not going to happen, the chairperson is ill, so they're not here. The next item on our agenda is the public forum, which isn't scheduled till 6:55 PM, and we can't advance that until 6:55. So we're going to have some dead air here, if you will, until that point, and then, once we're finished with the public forum, we'll convene the regular meeting at 7 o'clock, take a, take a quick roll call, approve some minutes, and then, at that point, I think we can move the appointments to the head of the calendar.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
So we're over and out until 6:55 PM.
6:55 PM, so we are going to conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific items or item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item this evening? Please state your name and address.
Hello, Michael Stassen, 893 Main Street. I just want to briefly address Communication 26, the request for appropriation of $14,000 for prior year school transportation. So, as I understand it, the mayor and the bus company reached an agreement a couple of weeks ago about how to, how much to cover for transportation fees for last year during COVID when services were reduced or days that they didn't happen. That totaled $514,000. $500,000 had already been set aside in the transportation account to cover this in anticipation of the agreement. So this $14,000 represents the balance of what the mayor and the bus company agreed to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Stassen. All right, is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum on an agenda item? In a second call, is any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item? In a third and final call, is any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on an agenda item? Seeing no one further, I will declare the public forum closed and we will open the meeting in just a couple of minutes. Publicly, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, justice, and law. I'll call a roll of the councilors in attendance, starting with Councilor Dubrowski.
Present.
President.
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 Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. We have six councillors in attendance. Does the chairman of Ruckus have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, I've reviewed the city council minutes of October 12th, 2021, and find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Very well, that may be done. Moving on to Communications for the mayor, starting with C-25.
Mr. President, do you want to take up those interviews now?
Yeah, procedure, we have to wait till we get to six.
Get to, okay.
C-25, a resolution vote of support to enter into a tax increment financing agreement, TIF, with biosuit convictions located at 554 Willard Street, Leominster, Mass.
C-25 is referred to the chairman of Ways and Means. Attorney General Chairman.
Regular course, do we need to set up a public hearing?
No.
No? Okay. Regular course.
We're going to suggest that we bring in economic development.
Assessor.
Assessor.
And a business rep.
And someone for the business.
I agree with that.
Everybody else okay with that? All right, that may be done, moving on to C-26.
C-26, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $14,000 be made to the prior year school transportation line, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding final payment for COVID year busing contract.
C-26 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-26 has been given a regular course. Moving on to C-27.
C-27, Dean J. Mazzarella, excuse me, mayor, requests the acceptance of the easement between the city of Leominster and the North Central Investment Limited Partnership regarding allow pedestrian and vehicular access from Manning Avenue to the grantee property.
C-27 is referred to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course, and certainly welcome any recommendations on the acceptance of the easement.
I did speak with the mayor this afternoon. Apparently, this relates to a building that's being leased, which was formerly the, which building is that?
Enterprise?
Enterprise, yeah. There are eight, they have eight parking spaces there that go along with that property, but physically can't access that parking area unless you go over city land, that's what this is about.
Okay, so, I think just regular course is fine.
Right, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
All right, so that may be done, regular course, moving on to 12-22.
12-22, city council president Badanza and vice president David Cormier request to revise Chapter 1, Section 1-11 entitled "Wards and Precincts" regarding re-presincting updates on map, ordinance revision to become effective January 1st, 2022.
12-22 is referred to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Regular course, and I guess just a referral from the city clerk.
Very well.
A public hearing.
We're going to hold it in house, correct?
We also need to set up a public hearing on that one as well.
Yes. Suggestion is November 8th, 2021, at 6:45 PM, is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
That's okay with me, we're starting to stack, stack up on that date.
Yeah, then I think we need to get this one done, right?
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
All right, you okay with that, Councilor Cormier?
Yep.
All right, you heard the recommendation to give 12-22 regular course and establish a public hearing on November 8th at 6:45 PM, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in accord, please are recognized in the usual manner. A vote of six to zero, the public hearing was established for November 8th, 2021, at 6:45 PM. We'll be on to matters before the city council, we'll skip over to Ways and Means, and are you ready to proceed with the appointments, Mr. Chairman?
I am, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Cheryl Carlino of 15 Tolman Avenue to the Office of Emergency Management. My recommendation is to confirm the, confirm the appointment. Councilor Cormier is the second member tonight.
I also agree.
So, Mr. President?
Okay, unanimous recommendation to approve the appointment of Cheryl Carlino to the Office of Emergency Management, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Dubrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Angelina.
Yay.
Councilor Hardiger.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. The appointment of Cheryl Carlino is confirmed by a vote of six to zero. Moving on to the appointment of Michael Chisio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Michael Sishi of 270 Hill Street to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2024. My recommendation is to confirm the appointment, and I go to the second member, Councilor Cormier.
I also agree.
So we have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President.
Very well, you've heard unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to approve the appointment of Michael Sishi. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Dubrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Angelina.
Yay.
Councilor Hardiger.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of six to zero. The appointment of Michael Sishi to the Conservation Commission is approved, or confirmed, I'm sorry. Moving on to the appointment of Richard Gullik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the appointment of Richard Gullik of 151 Old Farm Road to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2024. My recommendation is to confirm the appointment. I'll go to the second member this evening, Councilor Cormier.
I also agree.
So, Mr. President, we have a unanimous recommendation to confirm the appointment.
Very well, you've heard unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Richard Gullik to the Conservation Commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Dubrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Angelina.
Yay.
Councilor Hardiger.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. The appointment of Richard Gullik to the Conservation Commission is confirmed. Congratulations to all. Moving back to Legal Affairs, oh, yes, I must be back. Moving back to item seven in the finance order. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to advise us?
Yes, Mr. President, we begin the fiscal year on July 1, 2021, with $19,904,602.80. We've earned $6,816.87 in interest, which raises the balance to $19,911,419.67. To date, we have spent, or will spend if we approve C-26 as well, we will have spent $899,641.12, leaving us with a balance of $19,0355.55, and that is a financial report, Mr. President.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to Legal Affairs, and 75-21, is the chairman of the lady a report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the planning board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. We were scheduled to have a public hearing this evening, we had to continue that to November 8th. The only remaining items, one is, one of which is complete, is just an edited version of the, of the zoning ordinance changes, and also a need for a penalty provision for non-compliance, so we just need to get that from the planning director and we'll be good to go.
So given the fact that we've already established a good hearing, the, the stuff that's left.